Welcome to our What Month Are We In March Board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Yes.
Paul Hedo-Frias.
Here.
John Cream.
Yeah.
Thomas Grattan.
Yeah.
Scott Lathan.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Here.
In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobile, since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
Thank you. That brings us to our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we ask that questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Would anyone care to address the board at this hearing?
All righty.
That brings us to our consent agenda, which includes approval of our minutes of our regular meeting of February 7th and the budget meetings of March 6th and March 13th. It also includes the schedule of the bills, the treasurer's report for both January and February, the monthly budget status report for February, and transfers. I didn't notice any transfers, although there may not have been any. And the extra classroom activities somewhere. And we are surplusing some monitors, some printers, some computers, some old Chromebooks, more printers, keyboards, some other things I can't pronounce. Camcorder, I can pronounce that one, DVD players. Paige, should I do that separate from the 2 under B7?
You can do it all at once, or if you want to separate it out, it's up to you.
It also includes contracted services with regards to a settlement that we executed on January 24th, and also includes special ed services for students attending the Pecan Community School. Why are we sending the money to Matituck Cutchog and not Riverhead School District?
Because they're in Cutchog now, at the...
Laurel Lady Mercy.
Oh, I'm thinking it was in... Okay, okay, got it, sorry.
That's the new, you know...
So that was in January then, because that's when that opened?
Right.
Okay, sorry, I forgot about that. I thought they were in Echo Park. And CSEs. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? A motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then we've got, I'm not going to read this if anybody wants a copy of it. This is our...
It's in everybody's agenda.
Oh, okay, great. Our Joint Cooperative Bidding Program. This is for next school year, the 2024-2025 school year with Bosie's. This just allows us to utilize Bosie's, correct?
Yeah, good bidding.
Okay, is there a motion for the bidding for Bosie's 2024-2025? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Old business. Dr. Morrow, I guess maybe you have a little bit of old business?
So, you know, we're working along with our budget, hoping the state will come through with a budget on time. We do not expect it as it's due on Monday, and I think they recess either today or tomorrow. The legislature put their budget recommendations forward with the restoration of all the foundation aid plus a 3% increase. So as you can tell, there is a huge gap between the proposed budget out of the governor's office and the budget from the legislators. We're hoping that they fall closer to where the legislators are, but we're continuing to work on it. It is really only one part of the equation. As you see all over Long Island, districts are starting to come out and either acknowledge the fact that they're going to either pierce the cap or have massive layoffs. One district is expecting 80, another district 47, another one was 60, and you're going to see more and more of it as we get closer and closer. You know, the cost increases this year were, you know, in many areas excessive, especially healthcare and things like that. Those were really the biggest increases that we had. You know, some districts that are at a $9,000, $10,000, and $11 million shortfall only had an $800,000, $900,000 cut when it came to foundation aid. So even if it is fully restored and they get a 3% increase, it's not going to make up their $11 million shortfall. So, you know, we're in a good place. We're moving closer, and we hope to continue edging closer and closer, but really what we're hoping for is that we get an actual budget, because then you're operating on factual information as to exactly what you're going to be getting. You know, the two things that we're extremely dedicated to, and I believe that we will get done this year no matter what is, we will be at or below our cap, and we will keep all of our programs and offerings in place for all of our kids.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Up there, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Is there any penalty to the state when they don't come up with their budget by April 1st?
They have no penalty whatsoever.
Kind of a...
They have actually come up, they've come with the budget in late July, months after everybody has already passed their levy in their district. So you already decide exactly what you're going to tax on. You can't change it or alter it. You could actually lower it at that point when the state budget comes through, but you can't raise it. And they've come as late in my time in doing this, they've come five months, four months, three months after, you know, after you actually ask your community to vote on a budget. This was very common for the first half of my educational career.
I remember that, yeah.
But it really has become something that does not happen frequently anymore. It's the first time since I've been a central office administrator that we will have a late budget. So eight years, you know, this is my eighth year in this, in a central office role. This will be the first time that we've had a late budget. And there, it's really difficult. You know, it's really difficult. We have a very good financial position. We've made a lot of good financial decisions for the last decade, you know, well before I ever got here, and because of that, I can confidently say that we're not going to be eliminating, you know, if we eliminate positions, it's because of our size. It's that simple. The three or four teaching positions that we've eliminated in the last handful of years are because of our enrollment. If we eliminate any teaching positions this year, it's going to be because of our enrollment. If we don't, you know, run certain things, it's because of our enrollment. It's not because we financially will not offer those opportunities to kids. You know, we offer certain things, and people don't sign up for them, and we can't run them. You know, that is not, you know, that's not not offering. You know, that's not having the enrollment to do it. So, no, there's zero, zero penalty to the state when it comes to them doing their budget.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of penalty to us if we don't.
I know. It's ironic, isn't it?
Yeah.
That brings us to our superintendent report. Once again, Dr. Morrow.
So I'm going to go backwards, actually. You know, we did have some people that commented that they, you know, took offense to some of the things that happened during our play. So as the superintendent, I just want to apologize to anybody that we offended with our school play, and we will make sure that we will, you know, keep a close eye on any future plays and do a better job for our community, because we certainly don't want our kids to work as hard as they did and to do the wonderful work that they do and then have people walking away feeling that way. So, you know, I do apologize to anybody that I defended, and like I said, we will work to do a better job in the future with that. The last piece is, I started doing this, I guess, a couple of years ago. I'm going to use the projector for it. It's just a picture of South Hall when it comes to, some will be verbal, some will be numbers. I'm more of a number guy, so it is easier for me to have slides for it. So this is 20 years of South Hall enrollment, and then because we have our numbers, and they're fairly stable going down to our fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh grades, we can kind of roll them out going forward. So if you look at 20 years ago, we had 1,014 students district-wide, 515 in the elementary schools, about a 200 student difference than what we have now. That's why the four, five, six, we had 28 sections back then, we have 16 now, I believe. And we still run some very reasonable-sized sections, much smaller than you might see in some other places. You know, and then our high school, back then, we had 499. Our peak in the high school was 450, 543. Interesting that you saw the dip in the elementary prior to it, but it does make sense because the grades roll up. 2014 to 2024, you know, so we were 1,041 at our peak. We are now 666. Now, anybody who heard the last budget presentation, you heard Dr. Simonetti talk about how we educate kids now. Our percentages of special ed students, where our classes are significantly smaller, is up 7% in this time. It's up all over New York State, and it's up even more so on Long Island. Our E&amp;L number is also up, which is a whole other scenario where you need additional teachers. So the numbers don't tell all the picture, you know. It's not just a straight comparison to, you had 1,000, now you have 500, it should be half as many. It's not exactly that way. We educate differently than we, than we did, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. We provide different opportunities for kids now, whether it be in theater, in arts, in music, in sports, in whatever it may be. So it's not, it's not apples to apples always, you know, but, you know, some of it is comparable. If you look at our next four years, this would be rolling up our sixth grades into the junior, senior high school and exiting our 12th grades. You know, we have approximately a 20, 20-student shift annually. There's some that are higher, there's some that are lower. This also rolled in next year. If you notice, the elementary goes from 318 to 313. That's adding five students that came from New Suffolk, because they've decided that their five elementary students will be coming here. Doesn't change our secondary enrollment, because they're students for a year already. You know, but it looks in four years, our numbers will pretty much have played off at that time. Our smallest grades are seventh and eighth right now. They will be ninth, they will be 11th and 12th at that point in time. You know, our kindergarten this year is 38. We don't know what next years will be. Our average K to 8 number is 44, because we have a couple of grades that are larger. So when we do this projection, we count 44 coming into kindergarten. If we have less than 44, then obviously these numbers will be lower. If we have more than 44, then they'll be higher. You know, but I can tell you that our K to 8 average is 44, so that's the number that was used. So, you know, our, our change in population and our shrinking in population by the end of this table in 27, 28, will have run the course K to 12. So, you know, we should stabilize then after that, and we will hopefully, you know, we have a 50, class of 52 in the elementary, so a class of 38. You know, so we'll be up and down between that probably straight through. That's the hope, you know, and that, you know, like when you do this, there's no guarantees on exactly what it will be. Remember when the state thermographers came in and had us all build 28 years ago? And almost immediately after we put the district I was in, we put three additional wings on, on our six buildings. And then our population started to plummet immediately the next year, and we have gone down every year since. And the 8,000 students they had in that district are now in the 5,500s or 5,600s. We got these beautiful new wings that we put on the buildings, but, and I was there for the state thermographers' presentation, and they said, "Look, our projections are this," because we've been growing, the state, we've been growing, the state, we've been growing. So these are projections. Doesn't mean that, you know, we will manage and educate whatever comes. But, you know, these ones, when you look at certain grades, are fairly stable. We don't get hundreds of secondary students moving in. You know, our kindergarten is the least likely. You know, UPK, our UPK number is not big right now, but we could have a lot of add district UPE kids, so, you know, we'll kind of get what we get when they come. Now, things that are very important, I think our people are doing an outstanding job, because our participation numbers, when it comes to the percentage of students that are participating, they're up in music and art and sports and extracurriculars and clubs. They're up in all of them. In some of them, they're up 30%. You know, our middle school sports program, I saw the number today, was up 30%. You know, our, our music programs are up. Now, when you're up 20% and you have 38 kids in your grade, that's a big difference than when you were, you know, 50% or 40% of 80 kids compared to, you know, now 60% of 38 kids is a big difference numerically. So our numbers of total participants is down, because we are just, our numbers are down. But our participation numbers are excellent. So we're, we're providing a lot for kids, and our kids are taking advantage of it, which is great to see, and I hope that that continues. I did put up one, this is one of our programs, it happens to be our elementary and secondary band program. The reason I use this one is I had these numbers available, I had questions about it, but I don't, this would hold true for most of our programs. We, you know, we have good participation and good numbers and good support in all of them. But when you look at it, you see that we are similar to surrounding districts. I spoke with two of the superintendents on this, one of whom had just eliminated a full-time person, one that was looking to, just because their numbers had gone down. You know, to me, the most telling number on this is our group sizes, which is the second column. Our group sizes are at or below most of the other districts around, except for one that only has 15 kids in their entire program. But it's, you know, if you were to look at this for our middle school sports thing, program, and look at the percentage of kids in it, you'd see similar. You know, we had five teams this year that did not run, that we normally have and that we, we offered, but we just didn't have the participation numbers for it. So it's not a, you know, we would love to run it, and we would love to have them, but we had five teams not run this year. Two this season, one in the winter, and then a couple in the spring, because we just don't have the numbers. And then we have one that, you know, they'll compete, and they'll run, but they have a very low number of kids, they've eight, I think, on their team. They can, it happens to be a sport where you can participate, but they, so we will. And that's with combined. We have others that are, you know, we have one of our track programs that has eight kids. You know, our high school, boys and girls combined, it's 40 and 50, but those are great numbers. They're as big as some schools that have five times the number of kids we have, you know. And when you look at our overall participation numbers in our programs, any of our programs, whether it's our music program, whether it's our sports programs, our robotics, we have great participation for the number of students we have in all of them. So it's, you know, it's, it's nice to see. It is disappointing that we can't run everything. You know, it'd be nice to run everything all the time, but it is nice to see that we have more kids participating in things than we have had in some past years. So any questions from the board on any of this?
Are these numbers indicative all across Long Island?
While enrollment numbers being down are indicative of all of Long Island...
Same percentage as ours, or are we ahead of the curve, behind the curve, in the middle of the curve, leading the pack?
I don't think we're leading the pack. You know, I would have to find out for sure.
I'm just curious, and we're familiar with the North Fork and what's happened out here.
I just know that enrollment is down, enrollment is down all over Long Island. I don't know how our percentage fully compares, and you really have to look at when you take the percentage from. If we're looking at from 10 years ago, that's a different number than from 20 years ago, 23 years ago.
Fair, that's fair.
Like, we did, I did an enrollment chart back into the 80s in my prior district, because they, we were down 5,200 students since 86. But we also had 18,000 in 86. So, you know, 5,200 was a lot, but it was a third. When you look at us, we had 11, we had 1,050, and we're going to have, and we now have 660. It's about a third, you know. So it, it would be impossible to say without all those numbers, but I know that everything I go to, almost every district, there are a few districts that are broke, believe it or not, almost every district, the population, you know, they're, they're down, and they're struggling, and they all have different struggles, you know. Some of the bigger places struggle even more, because they've never hurt for any, you know, they don't have kids coming out for certain things. We had 600 kids in my graduating classes in one of my prior districts, two districts ago. They have 300 now, and they have a hard time fielding some of their teams and putting together some of their programs, because they have 50%, and they don't really know what to do, because they never had to recruit, they never had to go out and get kids to come and be in the drama, they have a great drama program, they have a great music program, but they never had to look for anybody, because they had 620 kids, 650 kids graduating. You know, so there are different challenges for every school district, you know, even though we would look at a graduating class of 300 and say, "How could you not have more of everything than you could ever imagine?" Well, they have different challenges than we have. Just, every place has different challenges. Any other questions?
I would think in light of this, we should probably look to our neighbors to share so we can continue to provide what we can provide for our students, and even expand it if we could by sharing, you know, like we did at other times.
We're having those conversations similar to us, our just, our surrounding districts, because I had this conversation last summer with one of our surrounding superintendents, and they're trying to do it similarly to us. Like, we've been able to make many of our changes without laying people off. Every time someone retires, we, we do an evaluation of the program and see if we need a full-time person back, and we look at what our numbers are, because it's by far the most humane way of doing it, rather than getting rid of live people, because I've gone through that. It's awful. And there are districts that are going through that, and it's not a pleasant process at all. So, you know, if there's too much of something and you happen to need it, then you can share very easily. So it is sometimes difficult to plan some of these sharing opportunities, because what I have too much of, you may not need, or you may have too much of. So it never really fits like a puzzle, but it's an excellent point and something that we, we try to look to do. And it was a conversation with the East End superintendents, because there's a lot of districts that are really starting to look to do it because of their size. You know, we have some districts that, like, we're really big for them. You know, they have half the size, they have the size of us, and they're struggling to field classes and programs, and so they're talking about sharing. You know, we had a conversation about sharing at our last cluster meeting.
Who was at that meeting?
That was...
Which districts?
That was Montauk. Well, there was, part was remote, part was in-person, but it was, it was from Montauk all the way in to Hampton Bays, and then the North Fork District, so all of them.
Did it include, like, West Hampton and those districts?
Nope, it stopped there.
Stopped at Hampton?
Actually, West Hampton was there, yes. West Hampton is the furthest east that it goes, but she was there, because she sat next to me. You know, and West Hampton is a district that we reach out to when we talk, you know, when we want to ask about programs, because even though they're larger than us, they're similar to us, you know. They're, I didn't ask, like, when I looked into certain programs, I didn't ask districts that are not similar to us at all. So having East End districts, we get similar in size, and we also get similar geographic challenges and things like that. You know, finding out what an Assau County district of 800 kids does doesn't necessarily help you, even though they're 800 kids and they're not that different than us. You know, what, where they are, what's available to them in that area, how, you know, it takes our kids an hour to get to a certain program on a bus here. They don't have those chances.
Two peninsulas out here.
Yeah. So I try to reach out to districts that are more similar to us, even though I could find a handful more that are size-wise just like us. They're not similar to us. Yep?
I have a question. You mentioned some districts having trouble fielding academic programs as well as classes. So those shared programs you were talking about, are those, like, have you been stressing exclusively extracurricular or additional to, like, class sizes?
We've talked about curricular, too. There's one district on the island that is talking about, they're talking about giving remote access to some of their specialized classes. So like, let's say we wanted to offer, you know, a certain AP class, like AP's Chinese Lit, or something that we just can't offer, because we have maybe one student that wants to take it. You know, remote learning is a real thing now, and there's a long way for it to go with this, but one of the conversations was about all academic, not extracurricular. One district is looking to try to bring in opportunities for their kids, because they're a small district, they happen to be on one of the forks, but I'm not going to help the guy now, because it's not my place to do that. But he was talking about trying to provide opportunities for his kids by either hosting the program and then having kids in that are close enough, and then remote if they're not there, and, or utilizing remote access to other districts for things like American Sign Language and stuff that's being offered in different places that we just don't have the ability to offer, because we won't have enough enrollment to maintain a teacher. You know, you can't get a teacher to come, to drive to South Hall necessarily to teach two American Sign Language classes, you know, point four. It's very difficult to get, so, yeah.
I, I remember you were talking about possibly for close districts busing students. I know my oldest brother took AP chemistry at Greenport a couple of years ago, and it worked out very well for him, so...
Yeah.
I was kind of referring to.
Yeah.
And even, like, 25 years ago, we did it as well. We hosted classes, and then Greenport hosted classes.
I think we're not going to have a choice.
Yeah. If you want to, if you want to offer, if you want to offer the programs for kids that all, that will put our kids on level playing fields with all the rest of the kids on Long Island, because the reality is, when you apply to Harvard, Harvard doesn't care if you're from the North Fork or if you're from Roslyn. They know you're from Long Island, which means we're all the same pool of people applying to Harvard, and they're not going to accept all Long Island people or everybody from all over the country. So we are competing with kids from all over Long Island. So if we can't offer similar opportunities to the rest of Long Island, then our kids are at a disadvantage, you know. So these are things that I believe school districts, all school districts, will have to look at, but I believe that as much as the pandemic was a distasteful time, and we had to do things that we maybe weren't fully prepared for, it, I think it opens eyes to some of the opportunities. You know, there are kids that are sitting in classrooms and learning with teachers that are on the other side of the country, or the other side of the world. Why can't you do that if they're on the other side of the North Fork, or on the South Fork? So I do think that there may be opportunities in those areas, both academic and extracurricular. You know, so it's, it's an interesting conversation, one that we've started with the superintendents. There'll be a lot of work with that, because there is a lot of legalities to it, and there will be a lot of, you know, everybody will have, you know, their input, and, and we'll have to come out to hopefully the best way to serve our kids, but, you know, it's a great question, and, yeah, academic and extracurricular, not just one of the other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. How do I turn this off? Oh. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to personnel. We all know how terrible I am at pronouncing names, but I'm going to do the best that I can. Okay, we have some employees leaving the district full-time, permanent. Jennifer Mullies going to, on FMLA leave effective May 9th, 2024, through November 8th, 2024. Rose Patty's extending her unpaid childcare leave through April 4th, 2025. Tim McAllister is offered resignation effective April 1, 2024. None of that one. Employees entering the district full-time temporary. We are going to welcome back Charles Turner as our NJROTC leave, instructor leave replacement effective April 8th through June 26, 2024. And then we've got some part-time temporaries, some spring coaching, junior high baseball, two junior high baseball teams, one coached by Alex Sinclair, one coached by Mike Carver, JV softball, Madison Taber, junior high softball, Courtney Kane. We've got some robotic mentors, Edward Shilton, Kim Shilton, Judy Fouchet, Amy Gammon, Tony Krill, Jamie Mills, Kevin Ray, Tom Shade, and Amy Schill. We have some substitute teachers, substitute aides, substitute custodians. Oh, let me go back to winter coaching. JV basketball was Richard Pisacano. I thought we had approved that, like, back in the...
Somehow, yeah, somehow we missed him, so...
Okay. I thought I had seen...
Approving him retroactively.
And our translator for kindergarten registration, Miriam Huritis. Are there any questions on the personnel recommendations? May I please have a motion to accept?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
My pages are going backwards, that's the problem. Okay. All right. This is going to be the last time we're going to talk about this boiler repair, correct?
We hope.
Correct?
We hope, yes.
This is an emergency resolution, which I won't read at all. What it's saying is that we need to take care of these boilers, because they're on their way out, and in order to make it happen sooner rather than later, we have to take emergency resolution action so that we don't have to wait for the state, which could not put us in a position to get them done this summer. Did I get that in the text?
That's completely right, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Got it. Never to be brought up again, these boilers. Okay, these are some exciting things we have. National Academic Association Competition. Our academic quiz bowl team enjoyed a successful 2023-2024 season, with our JV team being ranked number one in the Eastern Suffolk Division. The South Hall varsity and JV quiz bowl teams will be attending the Academic Quiz Bowl. National Academic Association Competition in Chicago, departing on Friday, June 7th and returning Tuesday, June 11th. The students will fundraise, excuse me, to offset the cost of the trip and will miss three days out of school. May I have a motion to approve that trip for the Quiz Bowl teams, please?
Second.
Second. Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
We also have our Virtual Enterprise Youth Business Summit. The Southall Virtual Enterprise 2023-2024 Firm Uprise will likely, by climb and doze in the past years, advance to the national level of competition for its marketing plan and financial overview. And will attend the Youth Business Summit in New York City on April 10th through April 12th. The students will fundraise to offset the cost of the trip and miss three days of school. May I please have a motion to approve the Uprise trip?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have these young people come to maybe our meeting next month? The, um, all of those groups that can do all these wonderful things throughout the year, please? We'd love to have them come and tell us about what they're doing. Thank you very much. New business. Anybody have any new business? Finance committee. Mr. Tobin, that's your right. Nothing? Building, Dr. Green?
Boilers.
I guess you didn't promise, did you? Policy committee. Mr. Latham?
We have a workplace violence prevention policy on for first read.
Which looked quite extensive when I looked it over. This is a mandatory thing?
It's a mandatory policy similar to most of the ones we have written by attorneys.
There was a lot of shells and whereas.
And then tweaked to meet your district's needs, but every district is required to put one. So that's why it was long and, you know.
They don't get paid by the word, they get paid by the policy. All right, so we'll adopt it at our second read next, next month. And this brings us to our second hearing.
Do you have a second on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Scott made the motion. Is there a second? Everybody seconded it, Patty. All in favor? Thank you, Patty. That brings us to our second hearing of visitors. At this time, we will entertain comments and questions about agenda items and any school matters in general. If you care to address the board, please step up to the microphone and just state your name and whatever it is you got to have to give us.
Sorry, I can't get what you said about my name is Jason.
Oh, just state your name. That's all.
Jason Barkley.
You might want to put that microphone up a little bit, Jason. That's like my size.
Chuck, can you, can you twist?
It's okay. You can hear him.
He's good? Okay, they can hear you.
So my first question relates to the elementary school.
I don't think that microphone is working. I can hear you, but I'm not sure they can.
So I'll, I'll just talk louder. My first question relates to the elementary school. And I know the budget is essentially flat. And I looked at last year's budget and it looked like it was a negative 5%. So I'm curious to know like what's going on with the elementary school that's going to provide more for those students? Because I've subbed into elementary school for the last two years. And my personal opinion, opinion is that it's very like, you know, even keel, there is no wow factor. And I work at other, I've worked at other schools and I work at another one now. And just walking through the school and you see the technology that they have, the Maker Bots, the, um, just all those kinds of things. But we don't really have much.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know how to answer the question like specifically. What can, what? Is it about budget or about what we offer?
It was about both. Like, how are we going to actually do something so that the elementary school gets more than what they have? The same thing that you were just alluding to with other districts with students going to Harvard or other schools. Well, if we don't give our students any of these programs, then what are they going to learn? And for example, right, we have a very, very good robotics program. I've brought my son up to the last two or three practices, um, just before they went up to Hofstra so that he could sit around and watch this. Now, he's only in third grade, but he loves Legos, he loves building. And I, I honestly can't teach him this stuff. So I wanted him to see this. But if we have a good program like that, like, is it feasible to maybe start a feeder program where the kids could start learning this program now?
Well, we did. We started, we started in junior high, a middle school program that we didn't have once upon a time. I don't believe there's, because robotics and Legos is a program. It's not something we made up. So they follow what.
I can find out what they do. I, I don't, um, when it comes to Maker Bots, Lego, like, when I went to a meeting last year with the library and it was in their school library last year, they had, uh, multiple sets of Lego kits around and they were developing different things. But I don't know enough about it to tell you whether they were ours, whether they were part of a bring-in program, which I've had before in other places. But I can, um, if you specifically tell me what you're asking about, I can certainly ask about them. I do think they did Maker Bots down there, but I'm not, I thought they did. But I, but I don't want to give you information that's not accurate and I don't know, you know. So if you're, like, if you want to know if we do Maker Bots and what we do at Lego or things like that. But certainly I, we can set up a time to speak with the elementary principal so that we can give you accurate answers on those things, if you like. If you reach out to me, I know that last time you were here, I, you know, I told you that if you reach out to me, I'll be happy to get you information on anything. I didn't receive an email. My email, some things come through to me, some don't. So I don't know if you sent one or not, but, um, you know, certainly I'd be happy to, to set that up for you so that we can look at, um, specific things that you're talking about. You know, because an open-ended question about what can we add in the elementary school that we don't have, rather than having a flat budget, is impossible for me to answer without, you know, knowing exactly what we're talking about. And I don't, you know, it's not my, as much as it's my district, it's not my school. So I don't, I don't even know if we use Maker Bots. I was under the impression that we did. Actually, I know I had a conversation about it last year when we were using them. I know that we use Legos in, in our school when it comes to some of the building things that you're talking about because I saw them and they were half erected when I was there. But I don't know specifically and like I said, I don't want to give you the wrong information. So I'm happy to try to look into that. If you want to reach out, we can meet with the elementary principal. Yeah, we do a winter Lego club, you know. I know we used them because I was there and I saw them, uh, being put together.
I can tell you from my experience from subbing over there, right, it was a matter of bringing the kids into the library, saying, here, here are some Legos, go. And there's not much to that. So how are we going to actually teach them something more than that?
I don't know the, I don't know the answer.
I'm not putting it towards you. I'm, I'm just saying, like, is there something more that we could possibly think about doing to prepare them for seventh grade, eighth grade, or the robotics team or something else? That's going to be more interesting. Because science is no longer just, you know, you know, bee flying and pollinating something, but it's more of a technology standpoint. So that's all.
I have something for that.
Sure.
I'm part of the robotics program and the whole organization is called FIRST. And so we compete in what's called the FRC, the First Robotics Competition. And there's actually sub-levels of programs. So FRC is the top level. So that's over 13 or 14 high school students, a full-size robot. Then there's FIRST Tech Challenge, which is for like middle school age. It's more of a robot, about a foot in, uh, foot. So that's like a more simpler challenge. And there's also FIRST Lego League. So you, um, that's for elementary school students or younger kids that, uh, it doesn't take as much supervision. It's not as much time consuming, but it's definitely a same, the same principle where they can compete.
Do you know if we do it?
We do not do it. We have, our middle school program is run by, um, Mr. Tu. And he, we have, uh, Vex kits of robots that we kind of just build with them for fun. But this could be a more.
Challenging?
Challenging and actually have a purpose to it, it could be.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, um, the younger kids one is for age six through 10 and you can actually purchase those. I don't know what the cost is and all that stuff, but I looked into that as well. Um, what else was there? Uh, one thing I just wanted to comment, um, I think it was like two board meetings ago or somewhere, sometime in February. You guys brought up cell phones. So I, I can tell you personally, if I look at my daughter's phone during the course of the school day, she's on the phone for at least two hours. And the answer that I get is, well, when the teachers end 15 minutes early, they just say, go on your phone. And to me, you know, sitting here with a phone on my desk while it literally goes off because another kid in the classroom is, you know, sending me a message. Like, maybe the answer could be just possibly put it into your bag until, you know, a free period or a break or whatever else. But you had great recommendations last time because I heard those.
Is that every day? She's on that phone two hours every day?
You think two hours is a lot?
Yeah.
An average. Oh, I'm like, oh, no, no, in school? Oh, in school, yeah. If, if not more.
In school?
Oh, yes. Every day. And that, and that's probably.
Sometimes some teachers might use the phone as part of a lesson, but there's that much time where these kids are on their phone doing.
Because I heard you comment last time too. And you said it could be great for bringing up things.
I don't know, not if, not if they're told to just go on the phone for two hours. That's, that's.
We were told that they had cubbies in each classroom. I have a feeling those cubbies are empty.
Like a good idea to make.
So I don't mean to start trouble with it, but then there's.
No, we've had the conversation.
When are we actually going to say, okay, guys, you could use the phone at some point. They are accessible. But why don't we put them away during the class and you could use them after, use them in a study hall, use them whenever you need? But I don't need to talk to my daughter all the time, so you really don't even need it.
What was determined as a result of that meeting and some parental concern that came to us via an email and some other concerns from parents is that Dr. Morrow and his administrative team were going to form a committee made up of parents, students. So before the next school year, we could perhaps have some kind of policy in place to maybe eliminate some use of the cell phone. How was that for gray? That was pretty gray, wasn't it?
No, no.
Because there's no black and white for this one. And so we left it up to the administrative team to research it and get back to us because your point is well-taken and that was our concern as well, that how much of the phone is being used for academic work? And how much of it is being used for other things perhaps?
Sometimes I'm curious why 75% or 80% of the students are on the high honor roll. When I was younger, it used to be something that was like an accomplishment. So I'm curious to know how many times you texting somebody and saying, hey, the answer to this question is ABC, dot, dot, dot.
Well, not only that, we, we had some blocks in place that I guess went awry because I happened to have my phone with some administrators at a game a few months ago and they were shocked when I could get on some of the websites that I could get on. And they did Debbie Downer, they did change those things so they can no longer have access to those during the day.
Yeah. Like Pearson Sag Harbor, I think may have gone a little bit overboard.
They did this year. Well, not over.
You have to drop it into whatever, it locks up and then you leave and you could unlock it. And, you know, that's a bit much, but just something.
There's a couple of districts on the island, very few. My principals communicated with all of the high school principals on the island and he got feedback from a lot of them. There's only about two that lock up. I can tell you this, that I have observed multiple lessons in our district where when you walk in, you have to put your phone in the sleeve. I've also observed other classes where you don't. You know, we're pulling our, our, um, you know, our referral records from teachers about, you know, problems and issues with kids using phones. And so we're gathering a whole bunch of information so that when we can meet, we'll have answers for the different things. And, and then we're going to look at it as a community and as a district. And, um, we're going to utilize input from kids and input from teachers and input from parents to decide what's the best possible way. Because your best possible way might be the best possible way for you. It might be the best possible way for me. We're going to try to figure out what's the best possible way for our school district to, um, to, to balance the fact that phones are part of kids' lives. Like, I know when you say to Dr. Kreen, two hours, it seems astronomical, but the average teenager spends closer to nine hours a day on their phone. You know?
You're only awake for how long? And you're in school for how long? So how much time is there?
True, but, you know, we don't have control of the.
No.
Oh, I'm not, I don't mean.
Yeah, but, but to me, like.
If, if someone is, you know, I don't know what the elementary hours are, but if someone is.
What grade is your daughter in?
And leaving at 2:30.
Ninth.
Two hours out of that.
It's not elementary.
Six and a half or whatever. That's, that seems like a lot of time. I mean, what, what happens at home happens at home.
And that's a minimum.
That's a valid point. We are.
So it's something that we're absolutely looking at.
Just hearing that that number to me is, is a little shocking to me. And I, you know, my kids are older and things have changed a lot since they were in school. But that to me is a little troubling.
I can't speak on behalf of all, uh, kids, but at least for me, a lot of the time I spend on my phone is, uh, like, after I finish my homework. Instead of going out to the, um, like, my family room to watch TV, I'll put a movie up on my phone or just, it's kind of a substitute, I feel like, for traditional.
When you're at home when you're doing that, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's, that's what I was saying. I feel like a lot of that screen time, obviously, that's still excessive. Nine hours is ridiculous.
How much do you use your phone in school?
Um, between periods, if there's a downtime in class, I'll see if my daughter's taking tests from my mom, if I was checking that, but.
And how much time would that be? You're, because you're a senior.
Don't put them on the spot.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
But you are.
I would say, I probably use it.
All right, give me your phone. Give me your phone.
Give me a phone, yeah.
Leave them alone.
I do have a study hall, so I use it during then to relax. I have it ninth period, so I'm usually done with all my work and I go on my phone. So I would say probably an hour because the study hall is like 40 minutes and then during lunch and do periods.
So two hours.
Round up. Anything else, Jason?
Sure. May I ask one last question? Obviously, health insurance is like the second biggest driver of a budget. And I think East End is up, is it 15%?
Fifteen and a half percent.
So do we look at any other insurance carriers, NISHIP, anything else?
NISHIP's up 17, I believe.
Yeah. NISHIP went up 17? Yep. Careful what you wish for.
I, I think. I'm just.
Ms. DeGogory, and I sit on East End Health Plan and it's, was, has been a big conversation and, um, yeah. NISHIP goes on, NISHIP goes on a different year. NISHIP goes from January through December. East End Health Plan goes from June, July 1st through June. So your, yours don't always line up together. The good thing about East End, well, you know, you're, you're asking questions you know the answer to.
Um, well, I could tell you that NISHIP is 3,367. And then with your 15% increase, it's going to be closer to $3,700, which means for a family insurance policy, it'll be $44,000 for East End versus $40,000 for NISHIP. So it's $40,000, or $4,000 extra for each family plan. So that's the way it's been over the years. I think with COVID, it kind of, it evened out a little bit. But, you know, do we look at, I don't know how much the teachers pay or the unions actually pay into this. But the rate of insurance going up is unsustainable for any school district. Because in the next 10 years, it'll probably be like $60,000 if not more, which means that a teacher making $80,000, you know, a quarter of their wage is going to go towards insurance. So do we look at anything like, you know, what is the percentage of teachers or the unions?
It's always negotiated when we do negotiations with all of our units.
What are we at now? There's a number right for.
It depends on the body.
Again, those are specific questions that you could email Dr. Morrow and he, I don't feel comfortable spitting on things that. Because it changes with each contract, but it's, it's, I'm not saying you can't get the information.
The answer to your question is yes. It's something, it's, it is something that is part of every collective bargaining unit's negotiation pieces. The, um, is the, is the cost of insurance. Because again, you know, there needs to be more contribution to make it more manageable annually. So yes, the, you're asking if it's something we look at and we ask for, yes. Yeah, we do. The exact numbers for each group, I don't have in front of me, but, um, like I said, if you'd like, we can reach out to Chuck or myself. We can certainly get the contractual ones for you for each year, for whatever contracts we have.
Everybody contributes. Rest assured that every, all of them.
Most districts are actually contributing at about a 20% rate now. And I don't think that's what's, what's going on here.
I honestly, I.
Which if you did that, you know, 1% on, you know, 40 grand, you got 4,000 bucks right there and the district's picking up 10 to 20%.
And when negotiations come around, that's what we discuss, but it's not always time to negotiate either.
We do the contracts every three to four years. So sometimes we get locked in and we keep on trying to push for more. There's also caps, so it's, it's, uh, it's not easy. It's, it's not easy.
I understand.
It's one thing that I've found, because I've been on the negotiating committee for a while, it's very, very, very hard how much of it's fair to take things away from people. So unfortunately, what happens is you give less to the new people. And that's sort of the dynamic, which is, can be a little slippery slope. But that's sort of the, Scott can speak to that because he, he does it with me and it's probably one of the hardest things that we do.
I get that part.
You know, you tell someone you're going to give them a small raise and you ask them to contribute a higher percentage of their health insurance and then health insurance goes nuts, you know. And you, you tell someone you're going to be taking home less next year than you did the year before. That's, that's a very, very hard thing to do. So that's why I think going forward, having less employees as our enrollment declines is, is going to be easier. Because it's, it's really tough to take things away from people. And, um, that's all I'll say about that.
Anything else?
Um, no. Okay. Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you very much. Anyone else care to address the board?
Hi, Amy.
Hello, Amy Doring, uh, here tonight for Music Boosters. We just wanted to once again request that the BOE consider re-establishing a full-time band teaching position in the elementary school rather than the, um, the fraction of a full person that's in there now. Just a couple of things we wanted to leave you with. Band instruction offers a wealth of benefits for elementary students that goes far beyond learning a musical instrument. Band class introduces them to the fundamentals of music theory, notation, playing techniques, laying a strong foundation for them for future further musical exploration, whether they continue with an instrument or even just enjoy it as a listener. Studies show that music education enhances cognitive development in elementary school children, improves memory, attention span, and problem-solving skills. Band participation fosters teamwork, discipline, and responsibility. And elementary students learn to cooperate with their peers towards a common goal, following instructions and practicing. a common goal, following instructions and practicing good habits. These are all life skills that set students up for success. Mastering an instrument and performing in a band gives elementary students a great sense of accomplishment and boosts their self-confidence and self-esteem. Any student, actually. Band provides a fun and collaborative environment for social interaction with peers who share similar interests and fosters creativity by teaching students to express themselves through music. Some have asked why we need two band teachers when we have just one orchestra teacher. And the answer is actually simple. Having only one orchestra teacher between the two schools has worked for us because there are only four instruments that share much of the same technique to learn, and those instruments can be taught together in a, in a lesson setting. When arranging lesson groups for band, there's a lot more to consider. Band students have a wider variety of instruments to choose to learn, and not every instrument can be taught together in the same session. Therefore, more tailored lesson groups are needed. So for example, you wouldn't have flutes practicing with trombones, percussion with clarinets, reeds with brass, and so on. So then you also have to consider the, the aspects that are specific to elementary school children, their age range. When you arrange lesson groups, you have to think of their age and their developmental aspects, meaning you would need even more smaller lesson groups to be available for elementary students because you wouldn't necessarily put a sixth grader in a lesson group with a fourth grader who has the same skill set because it wouldn't necessarily be developmentally, developmentally appropriate. So a full-time elementary band teacher significantly benefits our students' musical experience by providing the personalized attention that the elementary school aged child needs. Small groups allow the teacher to tailor their instruction to each student's specific needs and their learning pace. It's especially crucial in elementary school in the early stages of learning an instrument where foundational skills are being developed. In a small group setting, the teacher can provide more immediate and focused feedback on a student's technique, their posture, their musical interpretation. Feedback's essential for students to improve their playing and develop good musical habits. Small group lessons can foster a sense of collaboration and camaraderie among students. They learn from each other, they motivate each other, develop ensemble skills through playing together in a small group. And this also allows for more in-depth exploration of musical concepts and techniques tailored to the instruments and grade levels within the band. We believe the current elementary lesson schedule is unsustainable. Lesson groups are already maxed out. There's no time to fit in one-on-one lessons for the kids who are in the self-contained classrooms, and there's limited to no time to fit in makeup lessons for other students that need them. If the youngest students don't see their progress, get that aha, the light bulb, if you will, when they finally play a song, or hit that note they've been trying so hard to get to, they get discouraged, they lose interest in playing the instrument. And that's part of why our participation rates are still so high, is they get that at the elementary level. In the past, we've always given that, and they continue on, and they, they learn what they, what they're capable of. Less than 5% of the students take any lessons outside of school. So if the lessons aren't available to them in school to improve, they're not going to feel like they're succeeding. They won't continue the program, they'll lose all the benefits a music education can offer. And if we allow that, we're doing our children and our district a disservice. In my meetings with administration, I've been told that removing the full-time elementary band position was not a financial matter, rather a staffing issue tied directly to the expected upcoming declines in enrollment. One thing I want to leave you with is our band enrollment is not at all tied to declining district enrollment. In fact, it has an inverse relationship here in South Old Schools. At the high point of enrollment in 2016, we had 204 children in grades four through six. Forty-five of those students chose to join band. That was 22% of fourth to sixth grade enrollment. 2016 actually had the lowest participation rate of our elementary band program that we've seen. And despite the current declines in district enrollment, the rate at which our elementary students join band has only continued to rise. After a post-COVID dip in 2020, 22, the elementary band enrollment went up to 34%, then to 39%, and is estimated to be 43% next year. So middle high school, middle school and high school band participation rates are also expected to increase in the next year as well. So just want to leave you with, from what we're seeing, the declining numbers of enrollment really aren't a driving force to justify removing a full-time teaching position in the elementary school, and hopefully some of the points that we chose to bullet out for you, explaining why that is so critical for the kids to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Would anyone else care to address the board at this time? Good evening, Mrs. Goldsmith.
My name is Linda Goldsmith. I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Ophrius on her Scope Award. We missed you. There's only 850 people there. Your presence was very much missed.
Thanks.
But congratulations to you.
I was there. I did not see you, though.
Were you there?
I was there. And I would like to offer to the other two South Old staff members.
I didn't see you there. I guess that was because of the.
Drew Wret and David. We were.
Crowd in front of the.
We were by the fireplace.
Congratulations.
Under the speaker.
Yeah, you couldn't hear anything.
We couldn't see you.
I was the short one. But thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was difficult.
John came over to our table.
John?
Bobine.
Oh. John, yeah, the oyster box, right?
Yes.
Well.
We hire. But the other thing I'm here for is I am on the Bozey's Board, and as you know, we have a Bozey's vote on April 16th. There are eight candidates, seven seats, and I would like to encourage you to vote for, first of all, these five incumbents who are running. We've had a, Lisa Israel is actually your liaison.
Yeah, she comes, she comes to like a meeting a year for terrestrial.
She might, she might come in April, but I figured.
Okay.
She'll come in case she can't. This year, we've had, we've had a very busy year. Probably one of the busy, I've been on a school board for, I don't know, 37 years, maybe, give or take. And one of the busiest years and the, and the most difficult years we've had, we, we lost our COO, Julie retired. We lost our business official. We've added an entire diversity department. We've renegotiated contracts, and it's been really a busy year. We also lost two of our board members. Two of our board members died.
Fred was a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot to lose in one year. Fred was long-serving, very long-serving. Norm had only been on a few years, but he was very valuable to us. You know, we're all valuable, but those two were very valuable. So I would like to encourage you to vote for the incumbents. We have a lot of work to do. We're working hard on our DEI. And then whomever from the incumbents, you know, we have other choices. But I wouldn't like to see too much of a change. We're going to have two new members now, and then having any of our incumbents leave, it will make it a little more difficult to get people up to speed. Like I said, we, we are also going to be hiring a new district superintendent. And that's not an easiest task because historically, those salaries, we are capped by law, I think at 164,000, and the state kicks in something. But historically, if you talk to almost every superintendent on Long Island, there isn't, there are not many who make less than the DS. So it's, it's, sometimes it's difficult to get good talent. So that's why I'm asking you to, to consider the slating of the incumbents.
Personally, for one, I appreciate that information, Linda, because every year when this time comes up, we kind of look at each other and say, we, the locals we know, like we know Brian Neely. And there was the gentleman on Shelter Island, Steve, whatever his name was, that was on it for a long time. And of course, we know Lisa. But if we don't know somebody, we just kind of go in blind.
Well, Arlene Berisi is also on the Middle Country Board. She's running this year.
So it's, it's good to hear.
Jim McKenna, used to be superintendent in Manitowoc, is running this year. Joel Oshavo is from Patroag Medford, but another district nominated him this year.
And he's long-serving as well. He's been.
He's been long-serving, absolutely. And then, why can't I remember? Brian and, my gosh, I can't remember.
Robert Sweeney?
Robert Sweeney, he is an attorney who came on, he hasn't been on that long, but when it comes to negotiating contracts, it's really great to have him aboard, let me tell you. It's really nice, you know, because sometimes as boards, the things that you want to do, you have to stop and say, no, that language cannot go on a contract. So anyway.
Thank you.
You know, I don't, I, and everybody is hardworking. They don't miss meetings, you know, they, they, they do all of that. So that was, and then my third thing is, my husband died recently, and, you know.
I'm sorry about that.
We have grandchildren in both Greenport and South Old Schools, and I have a scholarship, well, educational foundation. And, you know, we were talking about it, and I said, well, what would you like to happen? He said, well, I have a grandchildren in South, grandchildren in South Old. I think that, you know, I wanted to do memorial donations for him. So he asked that it could be to Cindy's Fund or to South Old. So I have donations here for, and I see that the two ladies are here, to the South Old Athletic Association and to the South Old School Music Boosters in memory of my husband. And my grandson, who's in seventh grade.
Very kind and generous of you and your family, Linda.
So I wanted to, I don't, don't know if I should give them to you, but please.
No, give it to them.
Okay. So thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your insight and your service, for sure. Does anyone else care to address the board at this time? No? All righty. That brings us to our board member commentary. I won't call you Owen. I'll try not to call you Tate. So Flynn, what do you got?
It's starting to get busy this year. A lot of our older students are preparing, about to finish their curriculum for the year, about to prepare for the AP test. But it's a little weird dynamic because a lot of seniors are finally accepting their college offers. So it's like, some people are going way up, some people are going way down in workloads. So it's a very different dynamic in the school. But spring sports are starting up. We're in the third week of that now. Baseball had a game yesterday. Boys tennis had a game, match today. Actually, that's why I'm here, Skylar. They matched out the late, so that's why I'm here. VE, this past week, went to LIU Post and compete in a competition. I believe they placed first in one or two categories. I think one was resumes, like resume building. The NJRTC program, a couple weeks ago, their air rifle team went to Nationals in Alabama. This past week, they went to Brain Ball, which is a trivia competition in North Carolina, I believe. And the Raider team, I believe, is preparing to go to Nationals as well. So ROTC's doing very well this year. Very proud of that.
You got something going on next week. Something in the gym, right?
Oh, we have a sports night. So, yeah, we're doing an open sports night for any high school, high school students. So they bring in non-perishable items to donate, to cast, and we know it's have some fun.
Great stuff. Thank you for being here.
No problem.
Mr. Latham?
Just the, in reference to the presentation about our dropping enrollment, and it's just as the enrollment drops, to see the participation rate increase, we're not offering as, we're trying to offer as much as we can, but everybody's getting something out of something. And that's, I think, is important to keep in mind, that we are still offering things that people want to get involved in. And, you know, we'll ride this wave of declining enrollment as far as we have to. But as long as the kids are, are doing things, both academically and extracurricularly, I think they're getting a well-rounded, great experience here in South Old.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Kreen?
Well, I can't help myself, but I want to talk about boilers. But really, the reason I want to talk about boilers is, you know, we have, we have very healthy reserves here. And I've been reading in the newspaper that everybody, you know, people in Amityville and Riverhead are outraged, 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 because there's going to be cuts. You know, teachers are going to be cut. And in this district, we've been allowed to put money away. And so we're going to, we're paying for $2 million worth of boilers, and we don't have to go looking for the money. We don't have to bond it. We don't have to cut anything. So, you know, sometimes when I hear about, you got plenty of money, you know, and I've heard this sometimes in negotiations, you've got plenty of money, you've got tons of reserves. That's what the reserves are for. You know, no one's going cold. We're not canceling school because it's freezing, you know. So I know you didn't want to speak about boilers again, but, you know, the people in this district who vote on our budget year in and year out, for 20, as long as I live to, 30, 30 years, budget has never failed. And so I just wanted to thank the people who allowed us to do that. And also, we, I don't think we've ever fought, I don't, you know, maybe one or two people, we don't fire people here, which is sort of nice. Even though our enrollment has gone down substantially, we haven't had to do that, which luckily, well, you would have to do it, but, so, we're very, very fortunate. And our tax, the people who vote on our budget have been extremely good to us. And I look at this facility, I look at the, this, this, this space and the fields, we have 26 acres here. I mean, this is extraordinary. This is like a, like a college campus almost. And again, it's because of year in and year out, year after year, people support our budget. So I want to thank all the people who have done that over the years. And I'm sorry to bring up boilers again. I will never speak that word again.
I'm going to watch the installation.
We also had some, you know, athletic successes. I know there's some girl, some of the girls on our shared, a track team did very, very well. And I've always been a basketball fan, and I know we actually defeated Greenport in, I think, a playoff game this year, which.
County championship.
Okay, which is sort of cool because I watched a lot of games where we didn't. So I want to just give a quick shout out to those kids. And I'm sure there's plenty of other people who've done wonderful things, but I just wanted to mention those things quickly.
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
Don't forget to cheer.
Oh, right. Sorry, the cheer team.
The cheer team is here.
And esports. I forgot. I knew, see, I, thank you, thank you.
Becky can tell us a little bit about that.
I have cheer.
That was Orlando, right?
Pardon me?
Florida.
Florida. Happy Easter to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Tobin?
Happy Easter.
Okay. I just have a couple things. Declining enrollment, declining enrollment. We should come up with new words for it. There are no other words for it. There was a time then our district was not in a great financial position, and we worked really, really, really hard over years to have a financial plan. And as Dr. Kreen pointed out, that's why we have healthy reserves and can replace the boilers without going to borrow money or going to the taxpayers and looking for emergency money. And we're, we're proud of that. A lot of the districts that are facing big, huge layoffs, it's because the COVID money that they were given was a one-shot deal. I mean, we used it for things like ventilation systems because we knew we weren't going to use it for staffing because we knew there was an end date on it. I'm still very fearful, God forbid, that they're going to come looking for it back because of the money that we got. And I don't trust the state government or the federal government not to come knocking someday and say, oh, by the way, you know that money we gave you for COVID? You now have to pay it back. So I, I don't think it'll ever happen, but it's always in my mind because I would never want to then go to the community and say, hey, guess what? We spent money that really wasn't our money. And I think we spent it wisely for the community, for the students, for the staff of this district in ways that we were supposed to spend it. Things that were COVID-related, to make the school safer, to make the school better. I'm proud of our administrative team for doing that. I wrote all these notes. Thank you, Mrs. Goldsmith, for pointing out the Scope Awards. Not for myself, but I want to congratulate Deb Dibble, the teacher, special ed teacher here in South Old, who's retiring this year, and Drew Wret, our custodian who retired, who also received it. I was very honored to be with them and our administrative team there last week with the 850 intimate.
I saw you. I didn't.
Intimate award. They, they should put like geographically schools. I think you guys were on the other side of the room. And my problem with the boilers isn't that I don't like boilers. It's just for years sitting on the Building and Grounds Committee, it was like mundane stuff. I found boilers kind of boring. This, like, look at this library. This, I liked being part of. The track and the field and all that stuff. Boilers are like, so, how important are they? No, what bothers me about the boilers is that we did what we were supposed to do. And of course, in New York State, they can't get done their end of the thing. So we have to take emergency action to get this done. We're not doing anything outside of the lines. It's just that New York State can't get it done. And it's just ridiculous that Mr. Scheid has to waste time in his office to jump through these hoops to get something done that we have the money for, that needs to be done. It's a safety issue. Enough, I'll shut up about the boilers. I would like to congratulate all of our teams, our extracurriculars. The participation rate, I love to see it so high in all areas. And I think it's because, as Mr. Latham said, we just offer something for everyone. We were provided with a list of our extracurriculars and what we offer, K through 12. And I'm looking, I'm going, wow. And the numbers, there's a lot of kids involved in this stuff, and it's really cool stuff. So those are the things we don't want to lose, which is why we don't want to bust our cap, which is why we want to thank our taxpayers and our community for continuing to support us year after year after year after year. We're all super, super, super grateful to them. We can always do better. I'm just going to leave it at that. Everybody can always do better. And we as a district can always do better. And I think that Dr. Mora and his administrative team are always open to listening to others to see how we can do better and what we can do better. And we do take it seriously. We appreciate your attendance, and we wish more people would come to board meetings because it's certainly better than having nobody say. Have a wonderful Easter. I think the kids are off for just a few days, right, Mr. Clipson?
Yeah, we are. On Friday.